First of all, we want to thank all of you for coming tonight in the cool of the night. And we want to do our very best to get you back home before the inclement weather begins. Now, we're gonna ask Mr. Sloan if you come down with our vacation.
Before we buy your gates. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for each and every citizen gathered here today. We pray that the weather event that is upon us will be mild, would not be detrimental to this county or to the citizens. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We thank you for everyone that's here for the comments which we will deal with publicly for the business at hand. We pray that the decisions that we will make will be in the best interest of this community and this county to each and every one here. Christ's name we pray, amen.
Let us now repeat the allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I need to let all of you know that Ms. Darripel, our chair, is not feeling well and the county manager's at home so that we can all be well tomorrow. Temperature is high and subject to flu and so we didn't want any of you nor us to be affected by the flu. So she's going home and you all pray for that she gets better. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there's gonna be some changes. The first are the public hearings that are under item three, which were scheduled for 6:00 PM, are canceled due to the weather. The planning board felt that these could wait until the March 16th meeting, so we'll push those public hearings off. And also, prior to the meeting, Commissioner Reeves asked that we consider taking items B, D, and E under new business and placing them under the consent agenda.
All right. Are there any discussion?
So the public hearings are postponed?
Postponed until March 16th.
Thank you. Are there any in discussion? If none, could we get approval to approve the consent agenda?
Approve the, a new agenda.
A new agenda?
Yes. The revised agenda.
I move to approve the revised agenda as noted.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposes, same sign ayes have it so ordered. Thank you so much. You all have to bear with me tonight. You all know I'm the new kid on the block tonight, so you all be patient with me, all right? If you all be patient, as I tell them on Sunday mornings, if you all say amen, we'll get out early. Public hearing, we have...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we're at to the approval of the consent agenda now.
I thought we just approved the consent agenda, all right.
We approve the revised agenda.
Okay, all right, addition, okay. All right, now, we approve the consent, all right. Are there any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposes, same sign ayes have it so ordered. I'm going so fast you can't get that tonight, amen. Public comments, Ms. Debbie Hall.
Hi, I'm Debbie Hall, 957 Cumming Oak Road, Sanford, North Carolina. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for the energy and effort that I've seen the county commissioners have toward finding out about coal ash, letting citizens know about coal ash. I, as a citizen, really appreciate that. I do have a request, if we could have a town hall type meeting so that other people like me could hear what Don Krevosets has to say. I had seen and read about the presentation, but I actually was able to go to the ERAC meeting this past Thursday night and I thought his information was really relevant to the fact that maybe what we're hearing isn't all that it is. And I think that other people in Lee County deserve the opportunity, need the opportunity, and want the opportunity to hear what he has to say. So I would like to request that we could have a town hall type meeting, that you all discuss that, that would allow Don Krevosets to share with more people the information that I heard him share. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. That ends our public hearing. I mean, public comment, I'm sorry. Public comments. Now, down to our old business. Update on the buggy factory project from Mr. Crumpton.
Yes, Ms. Martin has the same thing as Ms. Darripel, so I told her to stay home too and told her I would take care of her report. I don't wanna get what they have, so send them home. The buggy factory has, or Progressive has received the building permits at the buggy factory. They got their permits over a week ago. They also have been, they also have purchased their federal and mill credits, which means they now have their financing in place, which is a good thing. They have started construction in the building and have started with removing the old flooring and they'll go in and put four layers under, you know, under the floor with a mat and that kinda thing to help with the sound in the building and then put the original old floor over the top, you know, for the aesthetic looks. And so, they have to do the floors first before they can get in and do anything else. Our committee that's been working with the city and the Partnership for Prosperity, they've approved all the furnishings, or finishings, excuse me, for inside the building, like the light switches and doors and paint, carpet colors and that kinda stuff. I delegated that to Mr. Kevoskets and Mr. Downey and our IT folks that they thought they could handle that. I didn't really wanna be in that. And the IT has already addressed security issues. Progressive now has their subcontractors lined up as well and they are projecting that the construction will be finished sometime before December 31st. They have a deadline with the tax credits that the construction and we have to be in by December 31st or they're penalized under the tax credits. So, I think they're moving along now and now that they've got everything in place with the permits and the financing, things should start going pretty quickly over there.
So the deadline is definitely December 31st?
They believe they'll have us in before then. Be happy to answer any questions. And Ms. Martin did say that she'd be willing to come back in March and update further since they should be further along with the construction at that point.
Any discussion? Accepting the fund for the off-leash dog park at OT Sloan, Mr. Payne?
Good evening, Dr. Frazier, members of the board. In your packet, I hope I gave you sufficient information of where we've been with the dog park issue. We've been working on this, staff has been working on this for over two years now and we finally received sufficient funding just before Christmas to complete the project. And I'm here tonight to ask that you accept this funding and we'll be able to move forward. We will kinda hold off until we can get the preliminary report back on feasibility study at OT Sloan Park before we proceed to look at how far down the road we're looking at or if we're on the right track with the sportsplex at OT Sloan. But we wanna make sure that we use all of our monies wisely and we're not in there and put it where, originally it was to be on the south side of the entrance drive to the tennis courts. But if we do a pinwheel sportsplex in that area and relocate the tennis courts, it'll be necessary to push the dog park more toward the main entrance where the main entrance is now. And we just wanna make sure that we make our money count as much as we can.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the acceptance of the donations from the Friends of the Park Foundation for the off-leash dog park at OT Sloan Park. Is the motion, are there any discussion?
I got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
How tall is the dog park fence?
Six feet. Yes, sir.
Is there way for the animal to get off the leash and get out on his own or...?
No, sir. We, the plans are to build a concrete path, which will, in essence, be a double gate. The dogs will go in on leash inside that first gate and then when that gate's closed, then the leash can be removed and they can enter either the small dog or large dog side, whatever the case may be, active dog or less active dog.
The closer we move to the, I guess, Bragg Street, the more concerned I would have about a dog breaking.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I understand.
The other question is, what do you find to be the average amount for maintenance on the dog park? Or did you look into that?
We checked into it, depends on the type of material. We're looking more at a mulch base as opposed to a grass base. I know that some dog parks that have a grass base have a little more issues, especially if they don't have good drainage. It's hard to keep it from being muddy, which was one of the knocks about our original proposal to put it at Kiwanis down in, down in the low area down there because that area tends to stay fairly wet and is mostly grass. But where we are, we can, we can have a natural material base and keep it from coming muddy.
There's very little ongoing maintenance expense in the facility. The city of Wilmington has it an empty park in Wilmington and, you know, once they have the elements up, the elements are pretty durable. The only thing you're really maintaining is the mulch or the ground.
Right.
And it's...
An empty and trash.
It's not very expensive at all, probably less than a thousand dollars a year.
Right.
And the owners are expected to...
Rules will be posted, yes, sir. And it's gonna...
Followed is what I'm walking, I understand posting.
Right. And it's gonna be spot checks, pretty much, and what we experienced in meeting with people in Burlington with their park and talking to some of the park users, they are pretty much, they're self-policing just like we intend to be and the folks that we talked to didn't have any issues. They, you know, so they were glad to have it.
We have the motion, are there any more discussion? If none, you have all in favor of the acceptance of the dog park proposal, let it be known by saying aye. Opposes, same sign ayes have it so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Payne. We're down to new business, the update report for the voluntary agriculture board.
Donald Nicholson.
Mr. Nicholson, okay.
Good afternoon. Some new faces on the board, new old face. Appreciate y'all's time, let us come and update you on what we've got going on. We're still active. We've only added 220 acres this year, four more parcels of land in the county. Brings our total enrollment up to 7,858 acres and a grand total of 48 individuals who have enrolled in the volunteer ag district program here in the county. And we do appreciate you all letting us come and getting in front of you every year and talk a little bit about agriculture and I hope that, do you guys have the updated picture in the county? I see Tim's got his there. There's a couple areas in the county we haven't had much success in, but we hope to alleviate that in future. Up in the northern part of county, there's a lot of forest landowners that we hope to, at some point, get into our voluntary ag district program. Do you have any questions? Come on, Mr. Reeves, you've always got a question.
You know what time it starts leaking?
I don't know that question.
It's started.
It started?
It's started.
Now, is there, can you, your group think of anything that we can help you promote the program even more?
At any time that you can talk to any landowners in this county and encourage them to enroll in this program, I think would be very helpful. For those of you who don't know much about the program, it's basically supporting agriculture and its continued existence in this county. And, you know, I grew up, still live in this county, have always been proud to be a Lee County resident and also in Lemon Springs and, you know, I grew up on a farm, I still live on the farm that I grew up on. And it's one of the things that I do believe that makes this county a really good place to live, that we do have the urban area, we have Sanford, we've got restaurants, some places a shop, but we have also got the country that makes Lee County very attractive to folks to come and stay. But we need to protect our farmland because we're still out there too. If there are no more questions, I'll sit back down so y'all can run out and get your milk and bread before it gets slipped in our...
We wanna thank you, Mr. Nicholson.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Any other questions?
Do you all control the, or maybe the farmer's market?
We do not control it, no, no, sir. That's, they basically control themselves, but they are supported by Susan and the extension folks here in the county.
I wanna ask her how she thinks that's going.
Well, last year, Mr. Reeves, we had an increase in vendors at the market. They're gonna be having their market meeting coming this week, Friday night, they're gonna meet, and they're looking forward to another good year. They've gotten some grant monies through the health department to put up some tents and make it a little more attractive down there. So I, I think we're doing pretty good. It's turned around, they had some new management last year, so they turned it around a little bit and always looking for those small farmers who can come and support that event and it's looking, I think it's looking pretty good.
About the time, they're gonna maintain the same times or do you know...
Yes, sir. And from what I understand, they're opening April 4th, so make that on your calendar so you can come down. That'll probably be a soft opening, but nine to, I mean, yeah, nine to 12.
I guess that's what threw me off. I don't think about a farmer's market opening at nine o'clock. I always thought they'd be open like soon the sun was up or something.
Right. And what happens is our farmers get out when the sun is up and pick that produce and bring it straight on in.
I guess.
Now, we're also very fortunate to partner with the Enrichment Center and on Tuesdays in, from 10 to 12, isn't that right, 10 to 12?
We use it pretty much set at nine at that time, too.
Okay, so they're over at the Enrichment Center, not just for the seniors that are over there, but for, the public can come by too.
Any more discussion? All right, thank you, Mr. Nicholson, continued support, Lee County Agriculture. Thank you. Thank you, Sloan. Ms. Davidson, if you could come on.
And just a note on the farmer's market, the USDA has vouchers that they give to older adults and we coordinate that where they're able to use, most of the time it's $15 worth of produce that they're able to get at the farmer's market and then use their vouchers there. Today, I bring before you the order forms for four mini buses and one mini bus with a lift. This is a little different from what we've gotten in the past. The state contract has not yet been awarded by North Carolina Department of Transportation for the vehicles, the high tops converter vehicles that we usually get. So considering the fact that these vehicles have reached 115,000 miles in October 2013, keep in mind how long we've already been running them, then they have allowed us to order these small mini buses at the same price that we would've paid for the converter vehicles with the high tops. We're only choosing to get one of these with a lift because it is a side lift and we're worried about, 'cause we haven't been able to actually try out one, we're just only getting one of these, so that will leave two more vehicles that will be transferred into fiscal year 16. The money will go with it, but right now, I'm proposing to purchase five of these vehicles. Total cost will be $227,838, of which the county is responsible for $22,784, and these funds were allocated in the current fiscal year 15 budget.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve. Are there any discussion? All in favor of this motion being, the vans, purchase of the new coat vans being approved, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, the same sign, ayes have it so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving along. Budget amendment, Ms. Minter.
Yes, we have before you budget amendment to 1615 number 10. This is allocating the money for the insurance proceeds and fund balance for the removal asbestos from the Sandley multipurpose building and it's also allocating the $30,000 that you agreed to accept from the Friends of the Park for the OT Sloan Park Dog Park. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve. Read the motion, are there any discussion? If none, all in favor of the budget amendment being approved, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose, the same sign, ayes have it so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Minter. Monthly finance, okay.
You have before you the financial report through January 2014. Again, I'll remind you that sales tax run three months behind, so do not be alarmed by the numbers you see there. Tax collections through January 2015 show collections being behind about 4% through the same period last year. We feel like this difference is probably attributable to the change in the vehicle tax system last year, we had some doubling up in some months, so we are not highly concerned at this point in time. In reviewing expenditures, the percentage used target is 58.33. At this point in time, we only have a few departments that are still exceeding that. Governing body is exceeding, again, it's due to the payment of dues to organizations and travel expenses. Strategic services is exceeding due to the maintenance contracts and new software. Elections is exceeding due to the cost of the recent elections. IT is exceeding due to maintenance contracts and completion of projects. Juvenile detention, as I've pointed out over the last couple of months, is still running high. And at this point in time, what we ran in this past, in the month of January, I'm anticipating that we will be bringing the budget amendment to you before the end of the year to cover that line item. And I will be reviewing that again to see what's going on in that line item. Apparently, we've just had more use be assigned to juvenile detention. Sales tax collections through November are also attached and you will see, we have received five months of distributions. We should be running around 41.67% of our budget in all categories except the Article 39, that's about where we're running. So I feel like we're doing pretty well on target with our budget at this point in time on sales tax. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Motion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't move the motion, do it. Thank you, Ms. Minter. Thank you. County management report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I have a short report. Wanted to let everybody know that the asbestos removal started on February 10th at Sandley Park from the old building. The anticipated length of the project will be three weeks. We also completed one other project since the last meeting, that's the holding cell project that was in this year's budget. For those that weren't here, this was a project that was to make the sales more, cells more secure and safer for both the inmates and the jailers. We had, you know, the metal posts up there and had some issues where people could reach through or project things through and so basically now have a glass type, plexiglass type tempered glass holding cell instead of the traditional one. So, project was in the current budget and came in under budget as well, so it's a good project. After our budget workshop of February 9th, it was agreed that everybody would send me their priority lists from the meeting. I've only received Mr. Smith's priority list. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And anxiously await everybody else's priority list of those items that we discussed.
As a former teacher, they're gonna get a D for being late.
And Mr. Smith does get an A for getting his in on time, so appreciate that. But we didn't really set a deadline for that, so just encourage everybody so that as we begin our planning process, we'll know.
Well, the list was so long from items that hadn't been funded in the previous rules that I was kinda shocked. So, I think if I prioritize the list that you gave us, that'd be substantial.
Well, that is, I think there were 12 items on the list, so, and that typically is what happened. We cannot fund everything.
Yeah.
And there are things that will be continually, 'cause other priorities come up and things have come up and you just, priorities change. Have the building inspections report attached, community development activity report. We gave you an update on the upcoming TRC meeting. Looks like they have more activity picking up, especially in the retail construction area, which is a good sign for this, what's going on inside the city limits since that is where most of that is going. We have a small delegation going to Washington DC this coming weekend for the NACO Legislative Goals Conference. Commissioners Darripel, Frazier, and our county attorney are going. The next regular scheduled board meeting is March 2nd and wanted everybody to note the soil and water conservation awards banquet at the McSwain Building on March 17th. That's it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Crumpton. All right, commissioners' comments, Mr. Smith.
I will be traveling to Virginia tomorrow, wish me well.
Good luck.
Prayers are with you.
Good luck with the weapon. I'll keep it short, everybody, stay safe. Thank you.
Mr. ...
Yes, sir.
Sure, on the TARPO board.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get some information, how long have we been a member of that board? How long has that board been created?
We've been a member of TARPO since probably the early 90s when the state required all the counties to be part of a regional transportation planning network. If you're not a member of a regional planning network, you can't get projects placed into the state's TIP. So we've been in, I think that occurred in the early 90s when you had to become a member.
What has it brought to this board, to the county? What has it brought to the county and the board? Could you carry me some...
The city's community development department is very active with the board.
The city?
Yes, sir. And the community development staff is responsible for getting the priorities from the county and from the city and then going back to the TARPO board and getting those priorities put in the TIP plan. The biggest project of recent that, that board helped us get was the bypass. You know, if that project would not, would not have been ready in the TIP when those funds came available from the federal level, we would not have had that project done. So in, in our region, you know, we have a very active staff, the city, the county, and the town of Broadway work very well together. We're one of the few jurisdictions where, you know, the cities, towns, municipalities, and the counties work well together. We're one of the few jurisdictions where, you know, the cities, towns, municipalities, and the counties work well together so that we can get those projects, you know, prioritized. The big problems we have now wi- with the TIP process is the new scoring system. Our projects, the ones that, uh, um, were a high priority, probably could have been funded within the next five years. Under the next, under the new scoring system, um, I'll probably be retired before we get the next, the next, uh, project going, unless the scoring system were to change, so, and I've got twelve years before I can retire. So, it, um, it, it has essentially taken almost all the TIP money and funneled it towards the metropolitan areas of Charlotte and Raleigh.
Has it always been called, all the time?
Since I've been here, since I've been here, it's always, always been the triangle area regional partnership organization or something like that.
Does the city and Broadway both have representatives on that commission?
Yes, typically the mayors, um, serve on that board. I think we have Moore County, Orange County, Chatham County are in our region.
Do we all pay the same fee, let me know that?
I don't know what the dues are, um, based on.
That was a question I had, why do we pay a fee to serve the board?
That pays for the staff, you know, that, that supports the board.
His mayors?
Yes, sir.
Based on population?
Yes, it, I think it's based on population, but I can't tell you what the others pay.
Thank you, your evaluation, thank you. Mr. Reeves?
Uh, yes, sir, I just want to, um, acknowledge the fact that the governor made a very, very good point about the pending weather. He instructed Highway Patrol to check every stranded vehicle to make sure that nobody was left, and I hope the sheriff and the city police would do likewise. It's much colder than I thought it was when I come out there, right? So, I know the temperature's gonna drop, could be very bad for a lot of people and animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. I echo the same sentiments about the weather and, uh, ask that you guys be safe while you're out, if you have to be out, and, and, uh, respect the emergency management team when they give us instructions, and, so we hope that you all will be safe if you have to go out. Um, also, we want, uh, hopefully that you guys continue to pray for our, our, uh, chair. This is a peculiar position right here, so, uh, you all pray that she get well. Uh, well, I, I, I promise you that you will never get out as early as you got out tonight. So, you all may want to vote me in as chair the next time. You know, motion to adjourn.
You may do that again.
All in favor of the, he said, so moved?
No, he was, he was moving something else, you want to, you want to get that motion to adjourn here.
It's been moved that the, the meeting be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same sign, ayes have it.